Welcome you all to the Village of Webster Board Meeting on October 27, 2022. And if you would please stand for the platitude.
My platitude wishes due by the United States of America as we through the Arlen fortuitous stands one nation under God indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. This evening, the first order of business is going to be a presentation from G and G Municipal Counseling and Grant Writing. Jake, you're going to make the presentation to us, I believe?
And I promise I'll keep it brief. I realize you have a full agenda, so I don't want to...
No, it's not that bad, but...
Well, as a former county legislator, I remember these nightly meetings when I just promised that it would be two meetings a month. And my wife and I were very surprised when it was not. So it was one of those things. The village was kind enough to let me come in and touch base with them on several things.
Do you want the podium?
Yeah, perfect.
Please.
Excellent. I appreciate you letting me come in. And like I said, I will keep it brief. And I spoke with some of you previously about some of the needs of the village. A little bit about ourselves, G and G is a municipal consulting and grant writing company. We're out of Spencerport, New York. We have a second office up in Oswego County as well for our central New York and North Country clients. I am a retired Rondickwood police officer. Had to go off to a little bit of an injury and missed the public service, ran for office in one. Genesee County, where I was a legislator, is small. We work very closely with our department heads. And one of the things I found I liked doing was grant writing. And the county was good enough to send me through a lot of training for that. Then worked for the state senate for a senator for about 11 years. And most of the work I did for him was either public safety related or grant related. A lot of DASNE work. And if anybody's done a grant or administered a grant with DASNE, they know how tricky and not fun that can be. And then I started doing a lot of grants on my own. The school districts asking, various groups are asking. So I kind of struck out on my own, formed a company. And we've grown. We now have four full timers plus myself and a smattering of part timers. And we're busy. But you know, it's a good feeling to help people get water in sewer and sidewalks and all the little things that we do, you know, especially, we know the needs of a village are huge. We know that the taxpayers are looking at you. We know you operate under the cap. So we try and keep things affordable. You know, some of the things we had talked about when I was last here, I know you have your well fields, you're looking for things like that. There is some speculation that there may be more ready funding coming. So I think that is something we will help you prepare for. There's no guarantee of that, but if we keep hearing rumblings, we'll see close election what happens with that. I know CDBG wise, you know, it's kind of interesting how it works out here and the potential for certain neighborhoods for water and sewer, things you could do with that. We looked at climate smart. We looked at upgrading of your comp plan. There's certainly monies to do that. And any grant you go up, when I saw you guys did a wonderful application for the New York Forward. When I come in here previously, you still had all the storyboards and the drawings and everything up. I'm familiar with the DRI grant. I have worked the DRI up in the North Country. And I'm familiar with the New York Forward and its new iteration of the DRI and writings, two of those in the last round. I would love to help you and whoever you're utilizing for grant writing. Whoever did that did a fantastic job from what I can see.
Ah, it's fantastic.
It's, I was so impressed by it. I was like, this thing is awesome. Because I know the work that goes into it. And you know, the public doesn't realize it when they see the effort that goes in by when you're bringing people in. But it's a team effort. None of this gets done easy. The work we did up in the North Country was work between myself and other company and the village. But in order to get those grants, you know, you have to have your comp plans squared away. You have to have your LWRP squared away. You have to have any business development plan and a great relationship with your businesses. We like the downtown development grants. We like the downtown and economic development grants. We have the ability to help your private business owners. Recently, we wrote a $2.3 million grant for a company in the town of Otania for some economic development. You know, it's a combined effort. It's not just you guys up here. It's meeting with your business owners. It's sitting down with your downtown merchants and seeing what they want. And that's something we do. I spent Tuesday night in the Village of Albion meeting with people for the next round of Restore New York that's coming out. And for those of you that might not know Restore New York, you're looking at, you know, the ability to, you know, submit a project. It could be demolition. It could be refurbishment. It could be building, you know, multi-use, you know, building. And the monies are large. We'd like to help with that. And actually, that grant, you know, the municipality can even do it. We wrote one, or wrote two in the last round. See if we get them. One was for demolition of the town hall in the Finger Lakes, and the other one's for a demolition of a building that's been an eyesore in a building in a municipality in the village and out of your county forever. Hopefully, we'll get that. And that building comes down. We are the people interested in bringing in senior housing. We're willing to sit down with your merchants, you know, with your business owners and, you know, and see what we can do as a team effort. None of this is done alone. It's all a team effort. Archiving grants coming up, you know, that's something that I'm sure you would be very interested in. Typically, that's used for either file storage in either fireproof safes, storage cabinets, fire suppression, or you're looking at the ability to digitize those projects. If you have boxes and boxes of files sitting there, now's the time to get it digitized for easier access. You know, this is the time we should be looking, you know, at something like that. There's cybersecurity grant out there right now for water plants and sewer plants. There's hazard mitigation for catalators. TAP CMAT will be coming up. And you know, you could be looking at that for park trails. It could be sidewalks. Could be traffic calming. It could be anything, you know, that you want to do, you know, in conjunction with your engineers, which we'd be another thing. We're familiar with most of the engineering companies in the area, whether it's Clark Patterson, MRB, VNL, Londo, La Bella. We work with all of them. We do a lot of median household income surveys in, you know, disadvantaged areas to help bring engineering projects and engineers like us. I think I've covered a whole lot. I mean, we talked about so much stuff within your, you know, in that last meeting, passive recreation parks, you know, ADA compliance, your meeting room, you know, meeting some upgrades. These are all things we should be looking at, you know. At any given moment, you should always have a letter on file of your state senator, your state assembly person, you know, for a SAM request or a member ID request, all these and all these and all these. And I'm very familiar with that process because it's one of the things I did at the Senate. Can help with that. Getting that through DASNE is another fun, you know, issue, but you know, we would get there. Does the village, the fire department's a district here, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, we do a lot of public safety work.
I don't know, is it a district or a taxing entity? I can't imagine that you're giving them any funding. But you got a lot of experience with working with fire departments. And it's something that we'd be glad to help with.
You know, I guess what I'd be willing to do is I would love to work for the village in some capacity. It's funny, most of our client base seems to be, although in Monroe County, we've worked with Clarks and Sweden and Grease, it seems like most of our client base is all over the state. And I am driving all over the place, like Gotham. It's one of the good things to come out of the pandemic. But we're trying to increase our base, you know, right here at home within Monroe County. It's, you know, 25 minutes from home for me. It's a lot easier for me to come in, you need something, and to sit down with you. You know, I would love to have permission of the board to submit a proposal. We'll write grants either as a one-off on an hourly basis, or we'll write them on a yearly contract, you know, whatever, you know, we would prefer. I would love to have permission to submit a proposal. We never do it without asking first because I think it's contentious. But you know, with the permission of the board, we would like to submit a proposal to you. We're close. We're convenient. And we've gotten a lot of money for a lot of municipalities.
Jake, can you explain to the board what the income survey is?
Income surveys are kind of our specialty. It's where we cut our teeth. The federal government will tell you based on the American Community Survey, which comes out by the Census Bureau, what your community's, both your median household income and your low to moderate income, which is your hardship, or your, they don't like to use the word poverty, but hardship. And unfortunately, in 2010, the US Census Bureau stopped asking you your income on census. And they rely on the ACS or American Community Survey. Problem is, you get it, you don't, you might get it, you don't. It's randomly sampled. Unfortunately, you know, the typical, you know, you get a husband, wife, two kids, they make 140 grand, they respond to that ACS all day long. It's technically a civil penalty to not return the ACS if you get it. But I'm here to tell you, senior citizens throw it in the trash. People that live in apartments, transient residents, they throw it in the trash. Single moms throw it in the trash. People of color minorities throw it in the trash. Unfortunately, then, these people are not counted. And when you're looking at seniors or transient population, their incomes are typically lower. So now your community's income is artificially inflated. That could be the whole village. That could be a couple of streets within the village. And we've done it both ways. Where we go in, we conduct an income survey. It could be just a street. It could be just the entire village. Sometimes we do an entire village and then extrapolate the data. We've been very successful with that. In the last round of CFAs that consolidated funding, and in the we-a round for water after that, our income surveys across New York State generated about 90 million in grant funding. And that's from us mailing out an income survey, and then we follow it up with this. We go door to door. It's the only way. And we do it as an unbiased third party. In the old days, they would let trustees knock on doors, do income surveys, things like that. But ESC, HCR does the CDBG grants. They view it as a biased survey. And I'm here to tell you, people see you in the grocery store. They see you in the bank. They see you at the post office. Their tendency is to exaggerate their income. When they see me at the door or one of my staff members and I'm at every survey, people are pretty honest with us. You know, we go in humble. We tell them, hey, the village is trying to get a grant. We explain what we're doing. We ask them the nine census questions right from the American Community Survey, and we're out of the nice house. We put the information together, submit that. We've never had a survey denied by, you know, Homestead Community Renewal. We've never had one denied by ESC. We've never had one denied by the USDA. So our surveys are pretty well known. Now we are doing them now in Arkansas and Illinois and Texas. And we're going to Colorado to do one. The key is the door to door if we knock. So what you're doing is you're being inclusive. And you're counting the residents who get bypassed by the survey. And they're certainly not going to answer a survey from the village. But when we knock, they're now counting. That information, if we prove that the median household income for that area is lower, or we prove that the low to moderate income is above 51%, it's not poverty, it's hardship, you now become eligible for funding. And that's, I would say, in the last five years, I've not even shown where we're at. It's probably 300 or 400 million in grant, grant funding for municipalities, and probably equal amount in 0% or a low interest ESC, USDA, or CDBG funding. So if you have a neighborhood that you think could benefit from an income survey, we can do that. We get it done quickly. And it does work. And you know, we'll always for free give an estimate on if the survey might work. If I don't think the survey is going to work, if I don't think that hardship is there, we're not going to do that. I'm not paying to waste taxpayer money and your reputation and my reputation. I only try and take surveys that I think are going to have a chance of being successful. So we've only had three that weren't. And you know, two of them, the board just wanted to, they were just pushing. I'm like, all right, we'll do it. That was a long time ago. Now I'd probably say no. And we had another one that didn't get to hardship, but it got to an intermediate level. So they still got some funding, not as much as they would have made with the hardship, but it was still, I guess, a half success. So if we can help with that, we would like to. And that can be used by the fire department. The data can be used by the town. So many entities can then use that data that shows hardship for their grant applications. And grant applications are based on need for the most part. If you show need, you stand a better chance of getting grants. That's how we kind of started. It was income surveys and grants, and it just kind of grew. You know, here we are today. I enjoyed this. I'm sorry. I get a little bit excited about it. It's, you know, police work, I loved it. But there were days I'd be like, ooh, today, you know. And now we help people, you know, get water and sewer and sidewalks. Today's a good day. So it's a positive thing. Questions about what we do, who we are, the types of grants we write. If you want to have to take anything from you.
I think one of the questions might be, in terms of your remuneration, would it be based on, if there were to be a survey based upon what would be asked of the board, you know, paid?
Surveys depend on how many households. And that's the main factor in determining the survey. How many houses am I actually mailing to and knocking to? Because it's, you know, it's staff having to knock. And it's determined, is it walkable? This is a village, so it's probably walkable. It's not like I'm out in the town and I have to drive from house to house. So they're all different, you know. It could be as little as, you know, it's a tiny survey. You know, we've done as small as $1,000. We've done a survey that was, you know, 13,000 houses, which was $35,000. So...
You want to have that in charge?
It was a big survey. That's, you know, I can't imagine you'd need the whole village. It'd probably be more targeted surveys. Like I said, we could do the whole village and then extrapolate. But you know, I'm not saying that's wasteful. I'd have to look at it and see. You'd have to tell them, what are the areas where you think could benefit from this in certain neighborhoods? Whether there's perhaps apartment houses there, or maybe you have some senior subsidized housing somewhere, we would certainly want to, you know, utilize those neighborhoods. But no, I would sit down with you. We would never charge you for the estimate. I promise you that. So you tell me an area, and I will give you an estimate. If you want an estimate for the entire village, I can come up with that as well.
Any other question?
With your permission, I would like to submit a proposal, though, if that's okay?
Sure.
Okay. And I will do it in two ways. I will do it, you know, as the one-off at an hourly rate. And I would do it as a yearly fee where we basically write on it as a grant, which we do for a lot of municipalities, pay one fee. And while we make less money on that, at least I can, you know, account for income for the year. It's good for staffing and things like that. Thank you.
Thank you so much again. Good to see you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
At this point, we will move to public comment. We have opened the floor for the comments, questions from the audience.
Aye.
Peter?
Peter Ullrich, 59 Dunne Avenue. I'm up here tonight about the Trick or Treat Trail. Just excited to let you all know, we have about 48 businesses participating this year. Close to our normal, obviously last year was a little lower. This is back to our pre-pandemic levels. We have a lot of interest from businesses in different parks in the village. Some of them are coming from the extreme areas up onto Main Street. So it sounds like a great day. We're talking about a 60-degree day with sunshine and no rain. So you're going to get mobbed if you're in the center of the village, but we'd like you to come anyways if you're out there. We want to see everybody here. Should be a great event. I want to thank Jake for getting the wagon done and all his great questions to me over the last two days. So thanks for that. I do have a text message into the supervisor about the police, just so you know. So we'll see what happens with that. And we have the wagon going throughout the village on a nice route. And then the museum is holding there. That time over there as well. So you're very welcome to come down, lap and park and go into the museum. The fire department has their open house that day. The Baptist Church is even participating for the first time. So they're going to be up doing something. So we are, we're obviously looking into years to come to get as many businesses involved as possible. Harmony House will be open. Some people down there. So there's a lot going on. We're looking forward to it. Of course, the village is doing this costume contest, but I'll let Heather talk. I don't want to steal her thunder. The village is doing that as well. So we have just a great day planned. We hope you'll all come out all over the community to participate. It's one of our biggest events in the village and looking forward to it. And Darrell, what's your costumes here? You going to give it up? You going to let us know?
No, I can't give it out.
You're not going to be, this is going to be a surprise, right? So he always dresses in great costumes.
I look for two pirates.
Yes.
Two pirates? Okay. One is Jerry, I'm thinking? Okay. Who's the other one?
Well, can't you get that out?
All right, all right.
It's a costume.
Ah, okay. All right. Carl's getting me adjusted. All right, anyways. So Saturday, the 29th, coming up, costume contest is at 11:00. And then the Trick or Treat Trail starts at 11:30 and goes to 2:30. So encourage everyone to come out and have a great time that day. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else like to address the board? Okay, then we will move then close public comment portion of the meeting. We will move to our scheduled items. Number one is a resolution to approve minutes from the September 22nd and also the October 13 meeting. We have one in front of you. I'll move this from here.
I made one mistake on the bottom where it says, but I fixed it. Jerry and Mary. So I fixed it.
Which one?
From September 22nd. Unless I already fixed it in there, I can't, I can't... This regard.
I want to make a motion to approve.
He found it. I fixed it though.
And Martin, you fixed it?
I fixed it. I just, I'd already printed these.
For direction. What is it? Moved by?
I think it was trustee Valke.
Yeah. Okay, moved by trustee Valke, second by trustee...
Yes, thank you.
Over that direction.
I'll make a motion. I'll second it.
Trustee Valke?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Mayor Barnes?
Aye.
Motion passes.
We have the claims and warrants. I personally only have one question. I was working this over. And the question, Jake, that I had, it's not significant because we're looking at replacement up there on the top of the building. There's the emergency repairs on the meeting roof, 15 grand, third page.
That was the, that was at the well fields. It was not, oh, there were some at the meeting room as well. And then the booster pump building, some here where they did around the edges and around some of the drains. There was a leak in sight and smoke here in that area there. And then somebody had to work it out for flash. And they had to do some repairs for his pocket repairs. And then the well field, it was a booster pump building where the clear wells are into the side of the hill. So if someone got on top of the building and bumped over, there was a spot where he could fall through. So there was a leak in there. So somebody might have trespassed. They didn't think they'd be able to get there because it was a place to fix it.
Was it a steel plate over there?
They did. They cut out a section of it and put the board decking down and then put the membrane back on top.
I personally have nothing else. If not, then we take a motion to approve.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Valke?
Aye.
Mayor Barnes?
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right. Next, we have a resolution to approve the appointment of Larry Hall to the zoning board of appeals to fill Peter Bowers unexpired term that ends on May 31st, 2023. Larry currently has a, I'll call that alternate to the board. We would like to approve him as a full board member.
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Valke?
Aye.
Mayor Barnes?
Aye.
Motion passes.
We were looking to have these bidders who are, well, in the proclamation on Peter. That will be coming up in the future board meeting. Next, we have a resolution to set a public hearing on proposed local law number nine of 2022, which is board attendance by video conference local law of 2022. This is a local law that would allow limited use of video conferencing. Just to summarize very quickly, there would be a need to have three board members physically present for the meeting. Up to two board members possibly could be involved in a video conference. However, the video conference requires members to be physically present unless such members are unable to be physically present at any such meeting location due to extraordinary circumstances, including disability, illness, caregiving responsibilities, or any other significant or unexpected factor or event which precludes the members' physical attendance at such meeting. That does not include vacations. So this will be, I believe, therefore, if we have resolved at a public hearing and set proposed local law number nine of 2022 shall be held on the 10th day of November 2022 at 7:15, Community Meeting Hall, 29 South Avenue, West New York.
Is there enough time to get it in the Webster Herald? It's got to go by tomorrow.
It'll be till for the next weeks?
It's got to be published five days before the meeting.
Yeah, I can send it tomorrow. Unless you want to push it to the next meeting.
It doesn't matter to me. I just, as long as...
Would it be coming to close? It should appear on Thursday, right?
Theoretically, it would come out on the 3rd. The deadline is, what, the Friday before?
It would come out the 4th. Oh, wait, I'm sorry. Yes, the 3rd, Thursday.
It's published, actually, it's published on Wednesday. Nobody gets it at Wednesday.
Because it's come out on Thursday.
They haven't considered their publication date.
Yeah.
It may be when they print them, but nobody gets them.
Distribution.
It may be Thursday.
I think so. Yeah, because technically, I can, my deadline to send to them is Monday at 5:00 for that one. So I have time.
How do you get there? Like I said, it doesn't...
Just, okay. Yeah, that's up.
10th or the 22nd?
Either way. Go to Peter.
So we'll let that stand. It shall be published one hundred before the...
It's going to be five days, one, two, three, four. Probably the, it's going to be the 4th of November.
Fourth.
Yeah.
Fourth. Fourth day of November, 2022. Official date of the Webster Herald.
So I gave you the word green, so you can type in the names.
So I gave you the word version, so you can type in the names. The same thing on the legal numbers. Did I give you the word version of it?
I think I only got the word version of the resolution.
I'll send you the word version.
Thank you.
So I will entertain a motion to, uh, hold the public hearing on proposed local law number nine on Thursday, the 10th.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Trustee Valke?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Mayor Burns?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Uh, next we have a resolution to allow, authorize Mayor Burns to sign an amended professional service agreement with Labela Associates to include a request for the increase to the professional services fee regarding the village of Webster well decommissioning, coordination, bidding and construction administration, Labela project to increase in the amount of $11,930 totaling $37,880. And this is due to changes in the project's schedule and higher than anticipated coordination work that has arisen during the project in respect to the request for an increase of the $11,930 to Labela.
Mayor Burns, Jake can explain that he's got a couple things that, yes, the cost went up, but it might have gone down in other areas, so if you wanna ask him.
Well, I see that the, in part of this, we have an extension of things, participation in the conference calls, the conference calls coordination removed. The materials, joint effort on this task has reduced anticipated overall construction costs by an estimated $90,000. Jake, you want to add anything to that?
I think that's, you, you basically just captured right there. This is Matt, but in the beginning of the total project duration is gonna be about five months when we look at this November. I kind of juggle every time I open up the folder in my computer. It says ready 2019 is the ready grant. And now we're in 2022 and it's still going on.
Not ready?
You know, there was considerable delay and extension just simply waiting for some of the approvals and things like that because it's linked to another project. And then as we got closer, we, when we bid the project, we realized there were some opportunities and we changed order and saved a considerable amount of money. But that changed order and that additional work did require a lot more coordination. I'm sure that everything is going and, you know, they've been very diligent throughout the process, so, you know, now we're, the well houses are all done, the wells are all filled, we've got one of them are properly decommissioned now. We crane them all if we travel and they play out there, that may play in some of the next, next trip, so. And then we've got to coordinate, I've already reached out and some coordination with the demo company, go back and pull the slabs. And they've got the wells all back built, so you can do your final cutting and happy that already knows. But we're getting very, very, very close finally. It's been a long time, but they've put in a lot of work, for sure.
And it looks like the project will be completed before the end of 2022, according to this.
Yes.
I'll just put up your clock there. Anything else? Right, well, motion is before you. Authorized we decide amended professional service agreement.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Valke?
Aye.
Mayor Burns?
Aye.
Okay, lastly, we have a resolution to authorize the mayor to sign a professional services agreement with the Bergman Associates for a service associated with the preparation of a step two well field opportunity area nomination study, to which I would believe that we no longer need to.
I looked at the agreement and don't have any problems with it. It's pretty straightforward, pretty simple. I know Matt and Jake went through the scope of services and they had issues with what Bergman was proposing to do.
So looking forward to moving forward with this opportunity. Give us something to, uh, place our hand on. So it is before you, a resolution to authorize myself to sign this agreement.
How did we get Bergman?
That was through a process where we had, it's a six man, we had six birds who presented, we did an initial interview with all six of them. And we thought that top three, top two in Bergman, we, we separated out and we reviewed them. And it seemed that Bergman had won, approached his knowledge to the area and presented, I think, something that we were impressed by. It was an interview process which had included two interviews. I have a, um...
I'll make a motion.
Motion.
I'll second those.
Trustee Valke?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Mayor Burns?
Aye.
That'll be a nice thing we can begin to move forward with that, I believe. Already made, please put together for that. Okay, uh, Don, anything that you would like to bring to attention with the board?
Um, nothing jumps out at me off the top of my head.
Have we had any response back from the town in the 9A? At least we've been to it.
Well, I just sent it out today, so. They did get, Jake said thumbs up. Marsha caught two mistakes that day, so I corrected those. And, and, you know.
And that would be...
The town, the town moves at a different pace.
So we have, we have volunteered to them and now we're ready to go.
Yes, so I tried to keep it as simple as possible. Bottom line, if they agree with the numbers, I think the village ends up with about $138,000 of the net grant of...
$101?
Or, or that is 475, something like that. It pretty much dovetails with the email Jake sent out a month or two ago, two months ago, I think. Obviously, everybody got, when he suggested instead of basing it on estimated cost, do it on the, the actual contract prices. That's, that's what this review actually agrees is. So hopefully we'll hear soon, you know, it's kind of a reimbursable thing, so I guess all of the, all of the invoices, the village pays them to the three contractors and to Labela and then Marsha sends that to the town and then the town packages it up and sends it to the state. State sends the town a check and determine that they pay the village. So it could take a while to see, to see the village's $138,000. That's the process, it's all, you know, the grants are all reimbursable. And I'm not sure when, what was the, what did I come up? I, I didn't bring the document, sorry, off the top of my head. What, what did I figure? It's 20, 29% of the villages, the village has to come up with about seven grand. Is it 20% of that? Or when, when that gets paid or who that gets paid to, I don't know.
I believe the grant is just reduced by, because we're paying, you know, the total, it's, the project total at this point is about $310,000 and so altogether it reverts $138,000. And so that match is part of that, that difference there and the remainder. And I think the town's total credit is about $700,000. And when we first started this, it was $230,000 and $326,000. They were, yeah, they were a lot closer together. And that's some of the interest that we had when we first talked about it was making sure that, you know, at that time, five years ago, the well decommissioning budget numbers that we had were considered really less than the, the original thought of 230. So we didn't want to leave money on the table for the community that, hey, we only spent 180 of it. We didn't want to leave 50 or 90% of 50 hanging out there. We wanted to make sure that there was flexibility in the agreement so that it could shift to whatever Bergman, you know, needed in proportion to their use of it.
Nice to know, it'll be part of your job. Okay, Eric, we haven't heard from you in a while. Where are you now?
This is your last one.
It's been a while.
Yeah. Good evening. As you can see in front of you, the, from our report for October, total of 15 permits, complaints, violations. I put a comment there to lost count. Numerous, we've had lots of complaints about several different things. One of the complaints you'll see attached for a violation that I sent out and about spent, taken away on him, 235 dunning.
The junkyard.
The junkyard, basically, yeah. I think he's only got a week or so left for the vehicle and they gave him 30 days for the rest of the junk. That's a standard, yeah, that's a standard amount. But it had several verbal warnings and communications that he didn't do anything for, so if he doesn't do anything, then I will be speaking with Don. We'll be drawing up court papers for appearance tickets. Going that route, which we don't really want to, you know, it's a last resort, but I think everybody in the neighborhood in the village is after what's had with, with this house. And it's not just the front, it's the backyard, it's the side yard, it's whole thing.
The old garage.
Yeah, that's the next thing, and I did, you know, mention that to him, that you can kind of see how, through windows, how the rest of the house and garage may appear. Yeah, so, so it's gonna be, hopefully not, but I think it's gonna be a little bit longer process than what we want. So just a heads up on that one, Don. So under legal, I mean, besides that one, as Don knows, we're working on multiple local laws. We're finding more and more through the zoning board, Carl, you know, you've been at the zoning board meetings. We're just finding wording and some of the other stuff that just does not make sense. So if an attorney can't make sense of it, I sure as heck am not gonna make sense of it. So, so we're gonna be trying to finish up a bunch of those before the end of the year so we can get the new code book, or the new codes out in the books. It's been, I think, over two years since that's been updated. Nine certificate, certificate of compliances of issue with nine closeouts. Update on Green River Crossing, site work for phase two is continuing. They now have a portion of phase two open for sale, the first three buildings that connect pretty much to phase one. Sales have pretty much come to a halt in a standstill. It's not with just them, it is pretty much area wide that sales have come. It's kind of in effect with the interest rates and like money and everything else because everything else is on the rise. Out of the 31 units in phase one, they have built our building. They've only got six of those not sold, the rest of them are sold. So that's, that's pretty darn good for the first year. Road dedication is still on schedule. I think Jake will talk about it in a round and get it that Don know, so just continue with that remark. Sorry. They did have a structure fire there the other day. One of their units under construction caught fire. I know one of the neighbors across the street, I'm not sure, I think I passed it by, noticed that at about 2:30 in the morning. So law enforcement, I don't know if it was the sheriffs or the Webster PD that was first on scene, but they hit with a fire extinguisher and knocked it down for the fire department. And then Webster Fire obviously got in there and did a great job as well. It could have been a lot worse, but it pretty much was confined to one cavity to the wall, but it did burn through the wall and then went up the side of the building. They made quick repairs of it because it was right out in front, but it was due to a space heater, not, not their construction or anything else. They're a very good builder, but it was due to a space heater. It was plugged in and left out overnight, so they won't be doing that practice anymore. They have also had several thefts from there, most recent one being one of the work trailers that housed generators and materials and tools and everything else. So they're gonna be putting up a lot of cameras to hopefully deter that. So, yeah, so they'll be putting up more cameras. Cussey Plastics has started work on their buildings. They got currently two permits for roofs, which total, you know, for work, cost of it is just over $4 million a roof for various that they're doing. So they're starting, several of us did a walk through for their administrative change of use. I think we're gonna have a great working relationship with them. I know some went on tour there, their skinny atlas facility. But Jake, myself and the fire marshals were, were up to par. I know it's gonna go down there and they're gonna be, hopefully occupying more of the buildings by next summer, so. Other than that, I think that's about it. Unless there's any questions for you?
Thank you, Eric.
I'm good, absolutely.
We did do, as you mentioned, we did do a travel, the Weena Boras. We traveled to Skinny Atlas, to the headquarters there and had a chat with the president, well, as a number of their senior VPs toured the facilities. So, we walked around and saw the windows, the breakers, the stand, we went up and toured them. And it's a, it's a significant, I have a great ambition coming into Webster and they have a great working relationship with Kelly. They were on the publishing part where they, they worked significantly. They, they were basically told, they bid for the production of test kits for COVID and through company, but they were told initially that we can do this. If they didn't do it, the government stepped in and said, we're going, we should do this. They did voluntarily, but they started, I think, in about 45 weeks and that was built, and they went down to, I think, low 30s or high 20 weeks. And the president said, I think, we're gonna build 15. So they worked 24 hours for 15 weeks and they produced 10 million test kits and were in operation. But I think they're wonderful, their staff is very open and I think they would be very willing to work with the village, as always with the town. They would be nice neighbors. work with the village, as always with the town, and they would be a nice new neighbor. I'm excited to welcome them.
Yeah, what they're going to bring to the table for the village and the town, as far as, you know, workers, employment opportunities, and other companies that they're going to be bringing in to occupy some of their other buildings that they purchased, the building two hundred, that's about nine hundred and something thousand square feet alone. You'll see some announcements coming out, I think, fairly soon, some tenants that are going to be going in there, they'll, it's going to be ready for this area, so.
Well, looks like we look through the office staff, and what's going on, what's going to be happening, and that's coming days.
So, we have our costume contest happening at eleven eight on Saturday, and we have all sorts of giveaways and lots of prizes donated by our wonderful village businesses and some individuals, and so we've got some great prizes, they're going to be, there's zero, five, and then, I forget, the second age group, it's a thirteen, and then we have a group contest. So we'll have like eleven prizes to give out, and those will be announced on our Facebook page on Monday, on Halloween, as well as in the Herald that same week. So we'll post pictures on Facebook of the winners, we'll also contact them, and we've got some really great prizes, as well as a photo, I shouldn't have you guys take a picture in front of our Facebook page, we're going to put this backdrop out there, so there'll be a spot for families and to take pictures for kids, for other kids, and send them out or whatever they want to do. So we'll have like a little photo booth area, and a lot of fun, exciting things to give away. We've got juice boxes and candy and all kinds of stuff, so.
Hotcrisp balls.
Hotcrisp balls, cookies, no, not for adults.
For the best, not the worst.
Somebody had a high priority.
So, it'll, we have a, it's going to move along really quick, so you can get to the trick or treat trail really quickly. You're going to move through the entrance over here, and you'll move right through, take a picture there, and then move right out of that entrance, and that's where the little photo booth will be. And then, we have, also have another event coming up for Veterans Day, where we're going to be doing the takeout luncheon again, and we're looking for help from our wonderful board members. Trustee Valkey already said he would come help, so we're going to be, it's going to be at...
Eleven thirty?
Eleven thirty, yes, two, one?
Twelve thirty?
Twelve thirty, twelve thirty, I think twelve thirty, yeah, because we had a, we pretty, they pretty much dwindled at that point last year, so everyone comes to the little ceremony and then comes up here for a luncheon, it's veterans and their families, and we look forward to giving lunches to our veterans, so, that's all. That will be on Friday, November eleventh, right here at Village Hall.
Jake, I don't want to steal your thunder, should I let you make the announcement, it looks like I have here in front of you something I didn't include earlier, and that would be a resolution to approve your lease of funds.
Yeah, so it's Greenbrier Phase Two, it's their first, the letter of credit release number one, and that was, it's basically, I think, the letter of credit release is included in there, too, if you have really good eyesight, after I had to save them some money in renting two cages per sheet in both sides, and it's very small, but, yeah, that is basically all their, you know, a lot of earthwork and silt fences, or, excuse me, silt sinks and things like that that they put in. A lot of the earthwork that they did for Phase Two is kind of completed, and that's what they're looking for, a release of funds.
And then if you authorize that, I send the letter out to them.
Yeah, by Star Bank.
Yeah.
Is there stuff in here for the road, temporary dedication?
Nope, this is, this is Phase Two, this is just an...
That was in Phase One.
Yeah, that was in Phase One, that we took the temporary, or temporary easement, and here's, this is, it's all in section E there, really, it was a reduction in retainage for some of the contingencies in the municipal observation, and that was all for install and maintain, erosion control measures, excavation, strip, stockpile the top soil, those are the big, the big three, and the clearing group are the big three, the other ones are just two thousand pieces, they're fifty-five or eighty, I think.
She can't see it.
Sixty-three, forty-eight, and fifty-five thousand pieces.
Magnificent class, magnificent class.
Yes.
So Jake, this is line of credit release number one for Greenbrier Crossing, Phase Two.
Yes, right. We've done five others for Phase One so far, and this is the first one out of Phase Two. Phase One still has considerable amounts still in it, because the, the roads are still there, all the contingencies are still there, and some of the final things that they had for Phase One are still in there. But then, when, incorrect me from round now, but once, if there's certain items that were taken dedication of, of the sewer and of the roadways, and certain portions of the stormwater, the contingencies that are included in the letter of credit will get converted, if you will, to a maintenance bond for a period of time when we accept dedication of, so it's not...
Because they have to guarantee it for like two years?
Yeah.
So actually, right now, also, there are tenants looking at the utility, right?
Yeah.
So, they're using utilities, et cetera.
Yeah.
Take dedication.
That's why we took the temporary easement to plow the snow. People who live in there appreciate the snowplow.
Okay, so, we have a resolution to approve the LOC release number one, and the amount of one hundred and ninety-nine thousand, thirty-one thousand, forty-three cents. In the letter of credit for Greenbrier Crossing, Phase Two, with a request dated in the year 2022, and authorize the village, of course, to sign a letter, five-star bank to facilitate the release of these funds.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second that.
Trustee Valkey?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Mayor Byrnes?
Aye.
Motion passed.
The next thing, I'll just couple updates and announcements. We talked about the, the Ready Grant, the Sambar Wells, I think, you know, if there's any questions on that, let me know, but I think I've updated that a little bit where it was at currently. We're also working with the Hazard mitigation plan with Monroe County, with the update on that. Had a couple meetings, we had one last Monday, and they had some homework for us, and seven and two tomorrow, but not until the end of the day tomorrow. So, I don't know, is if they completely get the consultant they have, they're great to work with, but it seems like they have some sort of suspicion that we are doing nothing unless they give us something to do. So, that is not quite complete yet, but we're, we're continuing to work on that, but it's a, you know, kind of a drawn-out process, but it's kind of comical that, yes, they gave us till the end of the day, so it is nice. We're doing leaves, we started last week, I think they've done three full routes already, we're just keep going around. This is, I remember commenting, I talked to our foreman Jim this morning, last year around Halloween time, there wasn't a herd nanny leaves on the ground yet, and it was kind of weird, because we were commenting, and we remember his kids, it was part of the fun, is running through the leaf piles when you're going around trick or treating, and there wasn't a herd nanny. And this year, it's kind of, seems like it's, the weather pattern's got us back to the normal, they're pretty heavy out there, and we've been, you know, we've been blessed with some dry weather, and they're, they did pick up pretty fast, as I said, they're, if they're going around, they just continue to make the rounds, so I think they've done by over three times so far, aren't they? So, that's good. The last thing I have is a brush chipper, I wanted to see, you get a legal notice to advertise for bids for a brush chipper. We've got one about four years ago, it was a good chipper. After the warranty period ended, it seems to have some, an electrical gremlins in it, which, that's a piece of equipment, we provide, obviously, a monthly brush pickup for our residents, and then if there's storms or things like that, it's something we got to have that's reliable. Without saying too much bad about the one that Germany had, I think it would be good, because it's going to be either traded in and for sale. We're, if you Google us to get something else, you know, we can't provide a service for our resident, and we're, and that expectation without a piece of equipment that's reliable. Currently, this one, they said, it's, it's got some electrical gremlins, we discussed even changing all the electrical stuff, it'd be about the same cost as the one we had, obviously, we have budget numbers together, when it's over that threshold, when we have to go out the bid. So, if that, some of the budget numbers hold up, it'd be pretty close to the same cost as what it would be to try to replace the stuff, you know, any of the electrical system, not just, not knowing if, what the gremlin is, if it's just going to happen again and have to replace it again, so, hopefully, see if we go out the bid and see what we get on, for these brush chippers. And we included in the specs for it, a new one or a used one with under a certain number of flowers on it, because if there's, you know, if there's ones, if, for instance, we're renting one now, that's a good machine, and it goes for nine hours when we rent it, if that one is available for sale, that would be good. But then, it's a brush band, it's a different, different brand, this Morbart one is great, this...